Welcome back again to the regular meeting, uh, meeting for the Baldwin County Commission, uh, Tuesday, June the 21st, 2022. Um, at this time, um, we're going to have the invocation by Pastor Jacob Baker with Three Circle Church of Fairhope, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Gruber. If you've all, please stand.
Thank you so much for having me this morning and, and thank you for all that you're doing for Baldwin County and its residents. My name is Jacob Baker and I have the pleasure of serving as the pastor of missions and pastoral care at Three Circle Church. And we just want you to know we're here to help out however we can in the community, whether it's COVID testing or vaccination clinics or polling places like today. We're, we're here to help. So please don't hesitate to reach out. But now for what I'm here for. Let us pray. Lord, thank you so much for everyone here. Thank you for the blessing and privilege that we live in a place where we can freely meet and discuss and plan for our communities. Thank you that we live in a place where we can freely voice our opinions. I want to thank you for everyone here today for our, from our concerned citizens, elected officials and county, county employees. Thank you for the lives and their hearts. Thank you that you have created all of them in your image. And I pray that your presence will be felt here during the discussions this morning. I pray that as always, your will would be done. Help all of us to make decisions that will be for your glory and the good of our county and people here. I pray that you will be with the elections today and let your will be done in everything. And I pray that we would have unity together going forward, that we could see past our differences and live not for ourselves, but for you and for others. And we ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Before us, we have, um, the adoption of the June 7th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Chairman, make a motion when you adopt, uh, the minutes from the June the 7th, 2022, regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Underwood, to approve and adopt the June 7th, 22, regular meeting minutes. Any questions on that? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, before us, we have our consent agenda. Um, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt our consent agenda with all replacement items that are noted.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner Davis, to adopt our consent agenda. Uh, any discussion? Um, as we stated, I think there was one that we needed to note for the record. If I'm not mistaken, I knew that, um, BN1, uh, just note the date and time change on that. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Y'all find out how fast this works, okay? So just bear with me. We're at our public hearings, uh, right now. Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have four public hearings for planning and zoning today, um, but we're going to jump right to Z22-9, which is the Bertola property rezoning. In this case, the applicant has requested that this case be tabled until July 19th, and they're willing to pay, or they've agreed to pay any cost of re-advertising that. Um, and they would like to collect additional information for a traffic study, and we certainly believe, we understand this is a sensitive case that impacts that area. So the more information we have to consider for this commission, the better. So staff would recommend that we do table till July 19th.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I accept the applicant's request to table this to the July 19th meeting. Make a motion in that regard.
And I'll second a motion to do such.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Underwood and a second by Commissioner Davis to table case number Z22-9 Bertola property rezoning until the July 19th meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have case number Z22/6, Action Auto Wholesale Property Rezoning. Selena?
All right. Good morning. Um, this is a request to rezone one acre from B2 to B3. Um, the subject property is located in Planning District 33, um, and it is currently zoned B2 Neighborhood Business. Um, the subject property is located on the south side of US Highway 98. Um, the current use is a car lot. Uh, the applicant is proposing a used car sales and a tire shop, um, which will also require, um, commission site plan approval for this use. Here's the zoning map. Um, as you can see, the subject property is, um, surrounded by quite a bit of B2 zoning. Uh, to the north is B4, and there is also some B3 zoning. Um, here's a picture of the subject property. Um, here's some pictures of the adjacent properties. Here is a, um, current aerial photography. As you can see, they, um, are already selling, um, cars and automobiles, which was done in the past, but they would like to add the tire shop to it. Um, staff believes the request to change is compatible with existing development patterns of the area. Um, the staff has recommended approval and the planning commission also recommended approval at their May planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Selena. All right. Uh, public hearing is now open on case Z22/6, Action Auto Wholesale Property Rezoning. Um, Mr. Nunley, is there anybody signed up to speak for or against this?
I have none.
Is there anybody in the audience that is wishing to speak for or against this matter? Okay. Hearing none. We close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve case number Z22-6, Action Auto Wholesale Property Rezoning.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, a second by Commissioner Davis to approve case number Z22/6, Action Auto Wholesale Property Rezoning. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Motion passes. Next up, Selena, we're on case number Z22/7, the Herndon Don Property Rezoning.
All right. This is request to rezone, uh, 4.27 acres from RSF1 to RSF2, um, close to the Point Clear area. Um, it's located in Planning District 26, just south of County Road 32, on the west side of Callaway Drive. It consists of 4.27 acres, and the reason the applicant is requesting the RSF2 is he would like to divide his property to have lots with 80-foot, um, frontage and 200 feet of depth. Um, you can see on the zoning map, it is surrounded by RSF1. There is some RSF2 to the north and to the east. Um, here is a picture of the subject property and some of the, um, adjacent properties. Here is, um, this is part of staff's analysis. We had shown on this, um, zoning map, the current rezonings that we've had in the area. Um, many of them are from RSF1 to RSF2. Um, and you can see the subject property is to the south of most of these. Uh, the applicant has also submitted a wetland delineation. And you can see the wetlands in the, um, west of the subject property. Um, we did have concerns from the highway department about Callaway Drive does not meet the width requirements required within the subdivision regulation. I believe this is a single purpose road. Um, but the applicant is proposing to do a family exemption. And here you can see they want to go from RSF1 to RSF2. Um, staff's comments, we had originally recommended denial of rezoning the whole property. Um, we said we would support zoning RSF2, um, on the front half of the property. Let me go back to the, um, where it's, um, similar to the property to the north, because the adjacent property to north is RSF2 lining it up with that. Um, and the applicant seemed like he was fine with just doing that portion. Um, but at the planning commission, um, the planning commissioners recommended denial because they had concerns with the density in the area and also with this, the narrow road, the single purpose road.
So, Selena, will you confirm one more time what the staff's recommendation is?
Um, staff, uh, well, we had recommended denial of rezoning the whole parcel, but we, we said we would support rezoning the front 200 feet, um, that fronts Callaway Drive to RSF2.
So what we're here for today is just that portion?
Um, either whatever y'all feel.
So we, we can opt to do just a smaller area. Yes. Okay. So since that was a recommendation?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Selena. Going to open up the public hearing now on case Z22/7, the Herndon property rezoning. Um, is there anybody signed up for or against this rezoning case? Yes, sir. Come, come forth, please, to the podium, and when you get up here, just state your name. Um, maybe your, um, your address and that kind of stuff, and give us a little bit of information.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. Good morning. My name is Tom Fortner, and I live on-
Mr. Fortner, if you don't mind, you're a tall man. There you go. Thank you, sir.
I live on Callaway Drive. My address is 16935 Callaway Drive. I'm about two lots from this location. Um, I, I represent a, a group of most of the homeowners, really almost all of the homeowners on Callaway Drive, in opposition to this proposal. It, it's changed a bit, as you just heard from, you know, what we left the planning and zoning board thinking it was. So, you know, I, I, but, but again, I, I still, so I'm, so I'm speaking from the position of the original request to rezone the whole thing RS2. Um, again, a, a list of the names and addresses of the people who are with me on this or are part of the file. And, uh, so again, it's most of the people. Now, our general concern is that granting this request, even though it seem, may seem like a small change, uh, represents one of a series of dominoes that if they continue to fall, will greatly increase the density of our, our neighborhood and will transform what is now a very pleasant and, uh, tranquil place to live into not so nice, crowded, busy, uh, in some cases even a dangerous place to live. Our most immediate, and, and by the way, I'll refer back to the, the lot where you see the, the darker yellow, orangey slots that are RS2. There's an awful lot of bright yellow RS51.
If you don't mind, Mr. Fortner, I'll get, Selena, will you pull that map back up for us, that he's, that he's referring to?
It's the one with that. There you go. Go back with the colored map there. Yeah. So, so everything south of there, you can see, south and, 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 uh, east, a lot of, awful lot of RSF1 is kind of like spreading now, this RSF2. And, uh, all of that is, is, you know, this is, part of this is the future that we're looking at and, and sort of the precedent that this continues, uh, moving to RSF2. Um, our most immediate concern, it was echoed earlier, it's obviously the concern of the planning staffs and the highway department, that, uh, the Callaway and Grass Road, uh, and they intersect and are the through streets of this neighborhood. Uh, they're one-lane roads, 12 feet in some pla, in most places. Um, and only one vehicle can pass, uh, on that street at the time, every day. You know, cars have to go off the road, completely off the road, to let another vehicle pass as they confront each other. Some of these cars are logging trucks and things like that, large, large vehicles, equipment, trucks that are tractor trailers that are carrying, uh, you know, heavy equipment and so forth. And, and, you know, this is only, with every additional house on this street, uh, that is, you know, open, which you're going to have more with RSF2, uh, that just means more, more vehicles, more family vehicles, more service vehicles and all that. So it's going to, it's going to change the, the, I think, the nature of the community. Um, we have children walking on these roads every day to and from school buses. We have senior citizens like myself walking, although I'm still pretty nimble, walking their dogs. We have joggers and cyclists. Almost all of these people have to get completely off the road to allow vehicles to pass, and it's their unimproved shoulders. You know, it's basically, uh, side areas that get mowed from time to time by the county. Um, so, so again, we're, we're, we feel like it's only a matter of time until we start having some fender benders and some, some, and even potentially some more serious accidents. I, I don't personally know the petitioner, Mr. Herndon. I certainly have nothing against him. I think, you know, it's understandable that he wants to ma, to maximize his investment, but, you know, I think that's the point. He, he doesn't live there. He is, um, he's an investor. He is, he's an investor of some sort, and, you know, he is not going to have to live with the impacts of this change to RSF2. And so, but all the rest of us are, and again, I think this is, this is just one more step in a direction that we're all concerned about.
Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Fortner? Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thanks for that opportunity.
Yes, sir. Selena, do you know, is the applicant here? Just want to know this request.
I do not see him.
Okay. Right, commissioners, do y'all have any questions for Selena?
What was the applicant's response to the recommendation from the planning staff to only rezone the first 200 feet versus, I'm assuming he moved forward with the full request for the whole parcel?
He was fine with that request. He wanted to do three lots in the front, and since there was quite a few wetlands in the back, he was fine with leaving that to RSF1, knowing you couldn't really do too much to that rear back lot that he was proposing.
Okay.
He wanted to do a family division. His intentions were to give one to his, I think him and his son own the property. He wanted to give one to his sister, his son, and then him.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, Selena and Matthew may have to have me out with this. I don't even know what the motion's going to be. One of y'all are going to make this, but just, when we look at these things and look at the staff recommendations and stuff, that's what we kind of go by, and, you know, do y'all have any questions on formulating a motion for this? All right, thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, the road is a single-lane road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there right-of-way capability on either or both sides that one day it could become a two-lane road, or do we know?
I'm not sure about that. That would be a question for Highway, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's one of them single-purpose roads.
Probably not.
That was paved many years ago, says a single-purpose road, and there is no other additional right-of-way that I remember in them.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Commissioner Gregory. I think the right-of-way is very tight, so.
I need, I'm entertaining a motion right now because we are done with the public hearing, so before the motion passes, if we want any further discussion, we can do that. So, just need to entertain a motion on this case. If I can make it, I would, so.
I make a motion that we go with staff's recommendation to only rezone the first 200 feet to RSF2, the back portion remain RSF1, because of compatibility of surrounding properties that are already RSF2 to the north and to the east, I think.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Commissioner Davis. Now, is there any discussion on this rezoning case?
I would like to make a statement, and as part of the discussion, is that we have no way to regulate family subdivisions, and this could be way worse if it was a family subdivision. And so, I look at a rezoning when it is, there's compatibility component to rezoning. And while many people would prefer things to not change, it's unfortunate that people love to come here, and at least with a rezoning, we have a lot more way to regulate the drainage and all that when it comes to the subdivision process. Whereas if it was a family subdivision, which we can get threatened with all day long, there's no, there is no subdivision regulation that they have to comply with, basically, when it comes to drainage and any type of drives that have to be paved or anything. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Underwood, second by Commissioner Davis to approve case number Z22-7, as recommended and stated by our Planning and Zoning Department, rezoning the smaller portion of this property instead of the whole thing, as stated by Commissioner Underwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Next up, Selena, is case number Z22/8. I don't know if I'm going to sign, what's, how do you pronounce that?
Vost.
Vost Property Resoning.
All right, this is a request to rezone a little over 39 acres from RA to RSF4. The subject property is located in Planning District 12, is zoned rural agriculture. The subject property is on the west side of Highway 59, just south of Thompson Road. It's currently vacant. The applicant is requesting RSF4, single-family, for the purpose of creating a future subdivision on the property. As you can see on the zoning map, to the north is in the city of Robertsdale, that is Central Ballin Middle School. To the west, it is zoned RSF2. To the east, there is some B3 commercial. And then to the south, you have more A, some multifamily, and some residential manufacturing housing. Here's a picture of the subject property and some of the adjacent properties. The subject property, as I stated, is currently zoned RA. Some of the other properties are zoned B3, RA, and RMF6, and which is a multifamily, and RSF2, single-family. All the adjacent uses are either commercial, residential, or agriculture. As stated previously, the property is requested for a single-family subdivision. Part of it, a little, small part of it fronts 59, but most of it is south of Thompson Staff has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval at their May meeting, and we did not receive any phone calls or letters from citizens or complaints on this rezoning request.
Thank you, Selena. Public hearing is now open, case number Z22/8, the Vost Property Resoning. Is there anybody in this building that wants to speak for or against this project? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the rezoning request for the case number Z22-8, Vost Property Resoning from, to RSF4.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner Gruber to approve case number Z22/8, the Vost Property Resoning. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Selena.
Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Gruber, you got to keep the lights going.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, and we pay the bills totaling $3,943,563.91, with the exception of item number 149. And of this amount, $481,171.43 is payable to the Ballin County Board of Education, and $34,510.04 is payable to the Gulf Shores School Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use tax.
I'll second that.
And so we have a motion by Commissioner Gruber, and a second by Commissioner Underwood to pay the bills, with the exception of item number 149, that is requested to be pulled. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when you pay item number 149.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, and a second by Commissioner Underwood to pay item number 149, and let the record reflect that Commissioner Davis will abstain from this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
EA2 is a notification interim payments approved by the Clerk Treasurers, allowed by under policy 8.1, takes care of itself. Other staff recommendations, we have none that I know of. Commission requests, I've got one request that was brought to my attention during the meeting. Lisa, will you put that picture up for me? Joey and I, this is dealing with a road project that we are doing in the Stockton community of a road called Fields Road. If commissioners remember, this was a, there's a piece of property behind this old house that a man bought. He's wishing to develop the property and put a house there, and there's no way into his property, other than completing this county road going into the property. We started the project and had a large gathering of people that decided this was too close to the house, and we pulled back on the project for a certain amount of timeframe. The timeframe ran, nobody came to an agreement with what to do, and so we agreed and voted to go ahead and finish the road. Joey and I went out and met with the family the other day, there was concerns about the road being a little too close to the house. We do have the easement there, and the house is almost actually on the easement. So what Joey and I came to the conclusion with the family, and they agree on this, is where you see the center yellow line in the middle of the dirt that is drawn here by the person that brought this to us, that is where the right edge of the road is going to be when it's paved, and it's moving all the way over to the little pink stake on the wood line there, which is where our easement stops. This way, it will give them about another four feet of grass in between their house and a paved road. This is going to be a single-purpose road, and at the end of this road, the gentleman that is developing the property back there is going to put a gate up, a private gate to keep people from just accessing his property as well. So it's going to, it's a, but my friend Sheila Fields came here earlier today, and she just wanted it on the record that she came to us with this rendering. Joey and I have been out there, and Joey is confident that this is going to be done. Correct, Joey?
Yes, we have no problem, just basically just shifting this road over to the pink state, four or five feet, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, that was my only request, commissioners, that just duly noted for the record that this is the, is what we're going to do out there. Okay? Do any of y'all have any requests? So Commissioner Gruber, what you talked about is actually an addendum item now, got it?
Yes, an addendum.
So we'll get to that.
Yes.
So, no other requests? Joe, you don't have any requests?
No, I've got some comments.
Okay, comments, okay. So we've got an addendum item HA1. I will read this staff recommendation. This addendum item consists of the request for referendum election called the Alabama Limited Self-Governance Act. We're going to ask the commission to adopt Resolution 2022/110, calling for a local referendum to be held on the question of whether the health and safety powers authorized in Alabama Code 11-3A-1 shall be effective in Ballin County with such referendum to be held during the election on November 8, 2022. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion now, we adopt Resolution Number 2022-110, a Ballin County Commission, calling for the referendum on health and safety powers.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, a second by Commissioner Davis. Was, like, any discussion on this? I would like just to tell the public.
Go ahead.
I would just like to tell the public kind of what's going on here, kind of shifted gears since the work session, and what we're trying to do is, there's two ways to do this. This is, this is coming in response to a lot of noise complaints that we get throughout this county, a lot of park trespassing complaints that we get in this county, and there's just a lot of different things that is hard for us as leaders of the community to keep telling the citizens that live out in the rural areas that there's nothing that we can do. You know, so, there's two ways to approach this avenue. We can do the same type of resolution to our state legislative delegation, and they just force this law upon the citizens, or we can do what most people like doing, and go into the polls and vote for this, or not vote for it. But in order for us to be able to answer to the public, and I think in a fair way, we're asking the public, what's your opinion when we go to a polling place, instead of just forcing laws upon people, which I don't like doing, I don't, and I don't want to go that route. And this commission has agreed to send this resolution to the probate judge, and that this will be on a ballot in November 8, which is just coming up, and the public will be able to vote whether or not, and this is the unincorporated areas of Ballin County, not within any corporate city limits. This is where the county does not have home rule and cannot set up these ordinances just by ourselves. Everybody thinks that we can just make things happen, but our sheriff deputies go out there, and there's nothing literally they can do. So, that's just a little public knowledge of what's going on, and we kind of threw this together today, and I'm very proud of the staff that did this, and as well as the cooperation with our probate judge, who's going to take on a very big task in making this happen for us. But it will give the people a chance to vote on something that they have problems with. So, Commissioner Gruber?
I just, I just want to say thank y'all. I think this is something that lets, give the citizens that part, to determine if they want it or not, and if they don't want it, then so be it, but at least they will have their say in whether or not they want to be, have us regulate this.
Commissioner Underwood, do you have anything?
Oh, it's not just about noise, it's this junkyard, and pollution, and unsanitary sewage, I think that we have all probably dealt with even during our tenure of those items, and it is frustrating for someone to move in or have a place out in the county, and that does definitely cause all kinds of problems, from rodents to devaluing your neighbor's property, to just not safe. And so, we don't have the ability to really do anything about that right now, so it's not just about noise, and also the fact that this just gives us the opportunity to address one or all of these items in here, but without that, because, you know, Alabama is one of about a dozen states that does, the legislature does not grant counties the authority to take care of this kind of stuff without this kind of a measure to go through, and I think that we would be letting our citizens down in such a fast-growing county if we did not at least put this before the people, and give them an opportunity to decide whether they want to give us this very limited aspect of self-governance.
Mr. Davis, you got any comments on this?
Well, this is an example of where, in order for us to get better, as we get bigger, this is a matter of us looking at my rights stop where yours begin, being good neighbors, and growing in a way that will enable us to all enjoy paradise. Thank you.
And just as we stated before, this is going to be on a referendum to vote for. So if you don't come out to vote, and this fails, then we're going to tell you for another few years that there's nothing we can do about it. Everybody had a chance to vote for it, and if they vote against it, then that's the people's will. But it will be up to the people of Ballin County who want these changes to vote for it. And it's quick coming, so study it, study the Alabama Limited Self-Governance Act. It's very self-explanatory, I read it, and it's something that, and, you know, I'm in agreeance with the commission. If the people want to vote on this, then it's going to be something that, you know, we as a commission have to tackle and find ways to enforce, because we will be the governing body of this now. But we do have a lot, and Commissioner Underwood was right in stating all the different types of, I just named a couple, but this covers the health and safety and of, I just named a couple, but this covers the health and safety and welfare of all citizens of Baldwin County. So sometimes noise ain't the biggest problem, but when you got, you know, all this other stuff going around, there's health hazards, I get it. But the people get to vote. That's what this is all about. So commissioners, I need to entertain a motion on addendum item HA1.
We already had it.
We already did the motion?
We did.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes? Okay. Any senior staff report that you know of? Anybody out there got anything to report on?
Nobody's.
Senior staff.
Come on, y'all all here.
Y'all all here today, might as well. We've got another meeting at 1:00, so we need to kill some time, right? Y'all know what we're talking about. All right.
Well, Commissioner, I mean, Chairman, would Joey, would you tell us where we're at with River Road? Because that has been such an event, and what a great job your crew did over the holiday weekend.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, River Road's out on Sticks River, close to Sticks River, just for everybody's information. It's been giving us a little bit of a maintenance headache for a little while.
Little bit.
Yeah.
Big bit.
It's a one-way in, one-way out. The road is bad to kind of wash and blow into, and people would be trapped. So we were able to acquire a large, very large pipe, steel pipe that was very heavy. We got the pipe delivered on site last week, and the guys came in on a holiday, which was yesterday, and started working on it, and a job that was supposed to take two days actually only took one. So the road was back open yesterday afternoon for the people to be able to get in and out. The guys did a great job. So, thank you for bringing it up. I wanted to give them kudos.
I can't wait to hear all those thinkings.
That's right.
Because I've heard all the complaints.
That's right.
But that's okay, it's a thankless job, but thank you.
Joey, this is going to basically help in a flash flood situation. It's not gonna, when the river rises, it's going to rise, it's still probably going to get water over the road there in a lot of those places.
Absolutely right.
This is just to take care of these flash floods that we get, where they get stranded for that.
That's right, absolutely right. When Sticks River comes up, that road still will go underwater.
It's going to go underwater.
So the ultimate plan is to move this road up the hill and get it out of the floodplain, and we actually had a meeting with the property owners last week to acquire the right-of-way to do that.
So we are moving on up, but right now, that, all that our guys were able to do was really a Band-Aid till we had a next flood.
Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully this will, river rising, we know, but maybe just with the flash flooding that we have, that this will sustain it until we can get the road moved up.
That's right.
We just need to pray we don't have a 30-incher. You get a Sally 30-incher, Drencher, the pipe's gone. The big steel pipe will be rolling down.
That pipe would just wash, the pipe would wash out.
Then we don't know how we're going to get it out. Somebody have a big steel pipe in their backyard. But yeah, so the energy of that water there is just crazy to look at when we went out there and observed it. So, yeah, Joey, thank you for that update, and definitely is great to see progress being made out there, because that is a touchy area out there where people have to drive way out of the way when it comes time to cross them. So I know they're happy to be crossing that again today. County attorney?
No report.
No report. That is always a great sign when our attorney says he has nothing to say.
That's right.
Very seldom do we get that response. Now we're in the public comments section. I know that there's some people that, maybe if somebody has signed up to speak for public comments. Joey?
We had somebody sign up for the Bertola property that has still wanted to speak, so, so yeah, it's your turn. Okay, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jason Sanders. I live on Rebel Road. Been there a resident for, going on over half my life. We're talking about the rezoning of that property. I don't want to overspeak, but I think the council recommended not to approve the zoning or the planning commission. But I think it's for y'all, and I think July, the developer's going to do a traffic study, and that was one of the, the traffic was one of the reasons it was recommended not to be approved. But if the developer does a traffic study right now, the, it's not going to be representative of what is actually goes on during 10 months out of the year. The school season from August to the end of May is horrendous. What I'm asking is, rather than doing the traffic study in June or early July, ask the developer, which I know he doesn't have to do it, he's offered to do it, ask him to do it in August, to push the decision process out until maybe September, October. Do the study during the really busy part, and let's assess that data at that point. That's my request in my comment right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're good.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Thank you for affording us the opportunity to speak to you. I will not be here on July 19th. My daughter has orientation in Tuscaloosa, so I wanted to use this opportunity to tell you so you can see my face, and I represent my family. I'm Adrian Jones. My address is 24861 Planters Drive, and this is an extension to our neighborhood. I am not opposed to development. I am simply opposed to zoning the property. And I have four points, and I'll try to keep them really brief, and I'll also supplement this by a letter that I'll send to you, but just for the sake of brevity. Appropriateness, precedence, it should be mutually beneficial to us, and due process. And I think the one I want to touch on is kind of picking up on Mr. Stewart's comment. The planning commission did render an unfavorable recommendation. I don't know that it was strictly based upon the traffic impact, but I think that if the answer would be yes, it was part of their decision, or even maybe, then it should go back to the planning commission for a recommendation to you again. Again, I'll supplement this by a written letter, but I just want you to know that I'm not opposed to development, more opposed to the zoning and intensification of density in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
Hi, my name's Maureen Demerit. I live on Rebel Road. The traffic is absolutely horrendous during school time. I sit there every morning with my children because it's not safe for them to stand there and wait for the bus to come. It's zoned 25 mile an hour. It's a two-lane, small road, and we understand why it's used as a cut-through because people can't get onto 64 from all the subdivisions out on 54. So, they cut through doing 45, 50 miles an hour. My husband's had people pass him on a small, narrow, two-lane road. My daughter cannot ride her bike, she cannot walk to her friend's house. This is our neighborhood. Just because it's not in a HUD doesn't mean it's not a subdivision. We are all very close neighbors. We're really concerned about the infrastructure when we're putting high-density subdivisions in there. You're adding at least three more cars per household. Two years ago, Daphne East sent half of their student population to the new Belle Forest School. Daphne East will probably be in portables this coming year because they are full again. Belle Forest has a maximum capacity of 1,200 students. They're already over 95 students, and that is not counting the new buildings, the new homes being put in place at the Daphne Reserve, Reserve at Daphne on 64, nor finishing up the Jubilee Farms Homes. And there's 1,100 homes that have already been approved. Where are these kids going to go? We have a small volunteer fire department. We have a very small place where we're all going to go vote today. And sometimes, like, when it's a big election, you're standing in line for hours. We don't have the water, we don't have the roads, we don't have the schools, and we realize people want to develop their property. We get that. We know why everybody wants to live here. I've lived here all my life, and I hate to think that I'm going to have to move to have the quiet life that we bought into out in Belle Forest because we didn't want to live inside a crazy, high-density city. And granted, Daphne is, it's full. It's full, there's nowhere else to go but out. But I will say, Mr. Bertola, he knew when he bought this property that it was RSFE and RSF1. The language in the ordinance back in 2006 at the advisory committee stated that they wanted to keep it RSFE and RSF1. We're just asking to, if you're going to develop it, keep it in the character of Belle Forest, keep it responsible. With your estate lots, you're talking a lot, lot fewer houses, a lot less cars, a lot less people, and just be responsible. You know, I hate to think that my family and I are going to have to, you know, eventually move to have the quiet life that we enjoy now. But we've already had deaths, we've had so many wrecks in the last week. My husband worked to death on 181 just a couple of weeks ago. There's a speed limit sign right before Rebel Road coming out onto 181 for 55 miles an hour. So when I go to work here in Fairhope in the mornings, it's take a deep breath, hit the gas pedal, and hope that God goes with me, because it is so dangerous trying to get out there. During the school year, there are 20 cars lined up on Rebel Road trying to get onto 181. Please, please take that into consideration. We are asking you for your help to stop the high-over developments that are coming into our area. It's so important to keep Baldwin County the way it is and keep it the way people want to, you know, that's why they want to move here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none? Anybody from the press wish to speak? I don't see any press here, so that's a good deal. All right, commissioner comments. How do y'all want to start it? How about you, Commissioner Underwood?
Sure. I am so excited about the recent opening of the Little River Sales Center. I love Baldwin County seniors. I'm not talking about just the high school seniors, I'm talking about our senior citizens. As I get older, I appreciate them even more and more and more, and if anybody that is listening out here, if you've never been to Little River, you are missing out. And I'm just sitting here listening to people talk about Belle Forest. Well, maybe Little River don't want me to give this sales pitch, but I'm going to tell you something, it's beautiful up there. They probably won't sell you any property anyway, so, but you could ride up there just on a, you know, Saturday afternoon or Sunday afternoon, but it is gorgeous, and it is so green and lush right now, and if I could afford it, I would love to have a place up there, but my husband says we don't have enough money. And so, he's right, we don't. But you know, the one thing that I heard this week is something that I was listening to one of my devotionals that says, you can make more money, but you can't make more time, you also can't make more land. But you guys just know that it's a tough job to sit up here. It is not easy. It sure don't pay much. And I love this county so much that I have chosen to spend a lot of my time caring about this county. So sometimes when decisions are made, no, it's not made, it's hard. It's very, very hard. I want to thank our staff for every single thing that they do. I am delighted to hear about River Road. I can't wait to see it moved up the hill. That does lie in my district, which we serve countywide. You guys get to vote for all of us. And I'm also thankful I'm not on that ballot today. I know what four years ago was like. Phew! But exercise your right to vote, go out and vote. I feel like if you don't vote, you really should not complain. Shouldn't complain anyways, nobody likes to hear that anyways. Should be constructive, you know, but, I don't know, I know we're kind of killing a little time because we got another meeting over here at 1:00, so hopefully Jeb ain't giving me that eye down there like, hush.
I ain't looked yet.
Look, listen at him. We do get along great up here, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that from all y'all. Y'all put up with me. My husband does, too. But thank you guys so much, and I hope your, I hope the staff is out there, at least I see Eddie, at least he's looking at me. Rest of them are embedded in their computers. Ah, there's Matthew and Brian. Look now, okay.
Mr. Gruber?
Yeah, just want to thank all of our staff and everything for what they do to get us to these meetings. I think there was like 900 and something pages to this agenda. That's a lot, that's a lot, that's a lot of paper. I mean, that's, yeah, that's going through a lot of stuff to research to make sure everything is done right, and, you know, they're to be commended for the work that they do on that. And also thank the commission for voting to do the resolution to the probate judge. I think it's going to be another tool in our pockets if it passes, that we can help the citizens of this county. The sales center, the opening that we had, I think it was last week, was fantastic. All those people up there were just, man, they just, they just love it up there. I mean, that thing went from having maybe 12 to 15 people, and it's got 29 people now, and they had to turn people away because they didn't have enough food to serve them. And it's done by a lot of them, and so they're going to be working on trying to increase the amount of food that they receive so that they can feed more people up there. It's remarkable, just, that's what the center did, just brought more people in there. And these senior citizens, I mean, they're just, they get around there and they talk and everything else. We just had a good time up there the other day with them, and it was just a great thing. And we got the one in Loxton that we just opened.
Have you been there?
I haven't been to the Loxton. I was there, well, it's been a while, but I was there just before it opened. I missed the grand opening, I was in Birmingham with my grandson, but anyway. But that's, it's something that we provide for the senior citizens to have someplace to go. I know the older we get, you know, we look for places to go instead of sitting at the house a lot of time. But anyway, thank y'all so much for what y'all do, and don't forget to go vote today. Thank you.
And the bearded wonder over here, Commissioner Davis.
Hey, Joey, answer me a question here with our Rebel Road friends there. If there were to be a light considered off 181, is that a state item because of 181?
It is, that would be a state decision, yes.
Okay. And as far as you know, there would not be a reason proximity to the light further up? I mean, it...
Rebel Road would be very close to the 181-64 intersection, so I don't think that I would like to see a light there. You know, as y'all know, we are improving 64, and we're actually have plans designed and fixing to go into the right-of-way acquisition phase on the widening of 64, which is going to take a lot of traffic off of those surrounding roads, hopefully. So we're also planning on extending Pleasant Road, which is just north of the intersection, to really help take traffic off of that as well. So there's a lot happening in that area. And so we do have improvements going on from a roadway capacity standpoint with new connectivity and capacity projects. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Rebel Road is a narrow road. It's a, I mean, it is a two-lane highway, but it is, I think it's 18, I think it's 18-foot wide.
That tight.
And so, I hope that answers your question.
Good. That was my reason I wanted our friends and neighbors on Rebel Road. If you haven't heard some of those projects, you need to, and then Joey and his staff would be available to share what's going on, what can go on, what might need to go on, and get your input on it. So that's the way we make things better. So I appreciate that, Joey. And one other point, need to give you an update on the Mobile River Bridge Bayway, just make some comments on that. We had a very productive meeting. You may or may not realize this, but the tunnels in the tunnel You may or may not realize this, but the tunnels and the capacity was designed for 35,000 cars a day. And currently, at peak times, we approach 100,000 vehicles. So obviously, we're behind in getting that corrected, but we had the Eastern Shore MPO. Billy Joe and I serve on, on that. We met recently. ALDOT is committed to moving this along. The whole idea is to have a toll possibly of two and a half, but the toll would only be on the bridge. There would be no toll on the existing ways to go to and from Mobile to Baldwin County. There would be no concessionaire, so there's no private pockets being lined like that $6 project that was thrown out there a few years ago. And inflation. The project originally, not originally, one of the estimates a few years ago was it would cost $2.1 billion. Now, the estimate is $2.7 billion. But ALDOT has committed, and the state has committed additional dollars plus, we're pursuing every possible federal resource available. There's not a better place that the US government could invest dollars than in that connectivity between Mobile and Baldwin County. The region, you know how fast we're growing. You know how the, the economy depends on the landing of Novalis up in the mega site. They provide aluminum for the ships, for the planes and automobiles. So we've got a lot of good things going on, but we gotta make sure that we grow responsibly. The, the tolling system, they've got some good ideas about that, where you'll have something on your vehicle, and it will, it'll be called an ALGO, A-L-G-O, or that's what they're calling it right now. But watch for that. There's gonna be more and more information put out by ALDOT about where this goes. And if you have ideas or thoughts that you would like to share with any of us, please feel free to do so. We're 15 years behind in getting this done. And the key is going to have it done in a way that doesn't disrupt things right now. And so, I've got a lot of people putting a lot of thought in how you do it and how you connect it. My focus has always been, Mobile's gonna get them a bridge. I just want them to be involved. I want us to be involved in how it connects to Baldwin County because that's gonna be critical for our ability to move around. So you'll get more information about that. I want to echo as well my colleagues' comments about the staff, the senior staff, the junior staff, the new staff. I've been blessed to work in a lot of great organizations and big organizations. Universities, two-year college system, banking, brokerage operations. I've said it before and I'll continue to say it. This is the finest group, top to bottom, I've ever had an experience working with. There is not even close to a weak link. I want the citizens to know that. And the reason is, we're citizen-driven. This group and this staff are about what makes things better. And you feel free to speak out to any and all of us, and this is a part-time job. They just didn't tell us what part of the day. Sometimes it's 8:00 or 9:00 or 10:00 at night on the phone, but that's okay. But thank y'all for being here, and thank my colleagues for the opportunity to be part of this great team. That's it, Jeb, for now.
Again, I just wanted to question something that you said, just for public knowledge, for public reference, since you sit on the MPO and made reference to this bridge project. You referenced that there possibly be a toll on the existing bridge, and, I mean, on the new bridge, but not the existing bayways. Is there anything that ALDOT's willing to put forth that's saying that the existing route will always stay there?
Yes. That's, that's part of the stipulation, is that this is not just an interim, let's get it all built sort of thing. This would be worded in such a way that no existing route would ever be took.
I'm talking about though, once the new project is finished, what happens to the old, old drive, the old bridge?
The bayway part?
Right.
You've got to transition from that, and the idea would be to have, you'd make it...
So there's something going into the tunnels, or you can always bypass the toll, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes, yes. You'll always be able to go on the bayway up to a point. You can either go across the bridge and pay the toll to get to Texas or wherever you're going. But all the other routes will be just as accessible for the locals.
Yeah, so public, just stay in tune with that. Those would be good meetings to be a part of when, when those meetings are starting to happen with ALDOT and POs and stuff like that. And I know there's a lot of concern out there that was centered around this before, so I think if, if everybody can come to an agreeance that, that you don't have to ever in your life pay that thing unless you just want to, it will, it would sit well with the public. But there's so many people that's scared that just as soon as all that gets built and in place, then the bayway comes down, and then the tunnels go away, and then people are forced to pay to cross the bay. And, you know, that's definitely not what we want. So hopefully, ALDOT and along with whoever else is involved in that will make the right Yeah, Commissioner Gruber said it today. I mean, today's an important day. Very disappointed with our last election process. I think 17% of our county showed up to vote. That's, I mean, it's not up for me to determine, but I mean, that's just ridiculous. You got too many people that has died for this country to give us that right to cast a ballot, something that may take you, whether you gotta stand in line all day long to do it or not. You take a day off of work to cast your ballot. The polls stay open 7 o'clock. 17%, and I think if I'm not mistaken, it's around 180,000 registered voters we have here in this county. 17% showed up to vote. The other, if we do this math right, 83% complain all the time, but they're not willing to ever make a difference. The statewide turnout was even worse. 20% statewide. Three-something million voters, I think. I can't, I can't remember the exact number, but 20% showed up to the polls and vote. I guarantee you today, I'm praying for a miracle that it's more than 10%. But we, some of us haven't even had the time to vote today because we had to come right here. We're gonna vote. We're gonna get out and vote eventually today. I've gotta get back to Baymanet before the polling place is closed, but I'm gonna get there. I just, I'm passionate about voting, have been since I was 18. It's, it's, it's a freedom right that was given to us by people that laid their lives down on the line so we can have these freedoms of voting. We don't vote, then things don't change or happen. And then we're scratching our heads, wondering what's going on. Well, then vote. So please, I know this isn't a big election for most of y'all, but there are some crucial decisions to be made just on this ballot today. I'm not, I'm not campaigning for anyone, but there's a very important congressional seat that people need to turn out for and vote. And, you know, that, that congressional seat represents us, and the representation that's retiring from there represented us well. And please go out and vote for, we got, this county commission seat's up, available, two people running for that office today. One of the two's gonna win regardless of five people vote today. So just please vote. That's my, enough on the vote spiel, but I just was, I was disappointed about our public turnout last time. It's getting lower and lower and lower as the cycles go on. People don't feel like it's worthy to go vote for a president that's not running anymore. So that'll be coming up again in '24, so maybe everybody will come out there. And I appreciate y'all speaking and staying around and speaking on behalf of your livelihood around Belle Forest community. I was, I had this conversation out in the middle of a, kind of a rural area that me and Mr. Nunley was at the other, other day in the Stockton community. And as we were sitting there in 105-degree temperature, standing outside talking with the family, getting bit by yellowflies every two seconds, and none of that bothered me. Just yellowflies were biting me, and we were still talking, and sweat's pouring down off of me, my, my khaki pants, where you could see that it looked like I just stepped in a swimming pool, and I'd only been outside 15 minutes. But the people that were kind of adamant and passionate, it's passion is what it is. It's not anger or aggression, it's passion. Nick Saban said it better, best, and I don't like using this and this term, but it's, sometimes passion is perceived as aggression by the unmotivated. So these people were passionate about the road being close to their house, and we saw that. Now, thank God, one of the girls is a friend of mine that was out there, and I said, "Do you know what we have to deal with as a county commission?" I said, "There's, there's gonna be a side that we make happy. There's always gonna be the side that we make mad." And it seems like, it seems like the, the mad is, is more precedent and top-heavy in everything that we do. And I was told early on, Jeb, you can't please everybody. Y'all never will please everybody. I don't know what's gonna happen in that case. I will tell you that I, I, y'all are passionate about your community. When comes time for that case, and I'll reiterate it more there, I watched that planning and zoning meeting live. And I want you to please tell the group that when you come to this chamber, it's not like gonna be like that. We're not gonna hoop and holler and clap. None of that is gonna be allowed. We hoop and holler and clap when people get promoted, when people retire, when a sheriff's deputy saves somebody's life in drowning incidences, or whatever. That's, that's what we clap for. We don't, we don't show those type of emotions that possibly sways the citizens of people on this desk. So I'm just, I just wanted to give y'all a, as, as long as I'm chairman, that's what, I control the meetings. These guys can help me out, but I saw that stuff. We don't need don't-tread-me-on flags, tread-on-me flags hanging from tables and stuff. We get it. I mean, I know, it was another, same meeting day, the same, same time. But there, both of those meetings ended when the planning commission voted in favor of y'all. A bunch of applause and whistling and, and, woo, and that kind of stuff. Not gonna do it here. Okay? Because if we make a decision that doesn't go in your favor, we don't need to get booed. I mean, we're, we're, we're working, we're, we're doing our job. So I, I appreciate the passion. I just wanted to lay some guidelines out before that meeting. Everybody's welcome to speak, and I'm gonna go over those guidelines. It's gonna be a contested thing, and y'all have got plenty of time to think about it. I would think about having a great spokesman for the group because we, we're not going, during a public hearing setting, we're not gonna hear repetitiveness stories. It is, it's one spokesman for the group, and then if somebody has something different to add, we allow that to happen. Understand, there's three minutes to deliver your message. Spokesman for a group gets five minutes. And that time will be counted and stopped, and then you'll, we'll go on to the next person. That is not anything different than what we do for anybody else. And that's gonna be, not only for y'all's side, but the other side's gonna have the same amount of time and space to talk as well. If there's attorneys involved, 10 minutes, five minutes or whatever, you know, for attorneys to talk. And because it's coming up in, in July 19th. Okay? Now, if you can't, I know you can't be here, but you can always watch us. We live on Facebook and live on, we won't get media com up there, but we'll be live on Facebook if you want to tune in and watch what's going on. Because of all these meetings, somebody told me the other day, we're not transparent enough when it comes to these meetings. I don't know how you can't be any more transparent. We're on, we're on Facebook right now. We're on TV right now, and you have a choice to come here. And I appreciate y'all coming because nobody comes to our meetings. You know? It's an opportunity. They're advertised weeks in advance, months in advance, years in advance, these meetings are up. Nobody wants to come. So I appreciate y'all coming today, and even though we're not hearing the case today, y'all, you voiced your concerns and passions, and that's, that's what the process is all about. And I, and I really appreciate being able to hear from y'all today. So with that being said, I, I can't, everybody else, these guys say everything else for me. So I mean, thanks to the staff, and, I mean, we work for a wonderful organization, and until you sit in our shoes, you just don't realize and grasp what we have. It's the best that I've ever seen, and I've lived here my whole life as well. And this is the best thing, one of the best things I've ever been a part of, next to my church and my family and that kind of stuff. So this is a very thankless job, but rewarding job. Like Commissioner Underwood stated, we're definitely not doing this for the money. We're doing it for the passion of how we feel for our community. And we love the people of Baldwin County, and even though we make some mad and we make some happy, you know, not everybody's got the five shades of red that they turn when they, when they show all these emotions like Commissioner Davis over here does. And I'm gonna be missing the five shades of red. I mean, we gonna, I don't turn all that, you know, colors. So, but I just, you know, we're, we're a good team up here, and it's, and it's been, it's the players are working with you guys, and we, we move things forward, and the public realizes that. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got two so moved. So I got one by, we got one by Commissioner Underwood, a movement, and a second by Commissioner Gruber to adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got a number of...